Like I said, they normally start right at seven o'clock. There's obviously something pausing them. Maybe somebody had to go pee. I don't know. I forget that people can hear me as I'm usually I'm in my studio doing this all by myself. And only my wife gives me that look like, really? Did you just say that? So Freeman and Buck are the people that we hope to vote out in the next election. They're up for reelection in the next election in '22. So they're the ones. And then we have the conservatives essentially on the board, which are Leander Blades and Sean Youngblood and Marilyn Anderson. Marilyn Anderson is a little bit of a wobbler. She's not quite as conservative as we hoped that she would be. And we're hoping that she's going to get stronger on some of these issues. I'm hoping it'd be easier if she would just understand the importance of our freedoms, of our constitution, and the things that are important to us. I'll take that last one. All right, everybody's seated again. Let's hope they're gonna get started here. She's grabbing the mic. All right, I'm gonna sit down.
We commenced our board meeting at five o'clock sharp. And at that time, we rolled into order and proceeded then to come into a study session that was on the study. And let in closed session, we handled the items that are so indicated on the agenda that are all authorized under the government codes as to handling them in a closed session. I do have some items that I wish to report out, actions that were taken by the board during close. The first item, the board took action to appoint Krista Borges, middle school principal, Valdez Middle School Academy effective October 13th, 2021. The motion was by Mrs. Anderson, the second by Mrs. Buck. It passed on a five zero vote. Item two, the board took action to appoint Jaime Perez Assistant Director of Technology effective October 13th, 2021. Motion by Mrs. Blade, second by Mrs. Anderson, passed on a five zero vote. Item three, the board took action to appoint Kana Day, Wellness Specialist effective October 13th, 2021. Motion by Mr. Youngblood, second by Mrs. Blades, and it passed on a five zero vote. And the last item, the board took action to appoint Shannon Williams, Wellness Specialist effective October 13th, 2021. And the motion was by Mrs. Buck, the second by Mrs. Anderson, and it passed on a five zero vote. So at this time, I'm going to call upon our board members, Mrs. Blades, to do some pledges.
Yes.
Let's lead this great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we need to have an approval of tonight's agenda as
We can't hear you.
It is on. My microphone is on. We will now have the approval of tonight's agenda as
I'll make a motion to approve the October 12th Board of Education Agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
I have a motion from Mr. Youngblood that seconded by Mrs. Anderson. All votes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is as fast as we can. At this time, we have a special presentation I'm going to hand over to our Assistant Superintendent Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, President Freeman. Prior to the pandemic, a typical board meeting would present any number of opportunities for students to join us, whether it be to recognize them, their incredible achievements, or to invite them to perform. It is this presence that we always most since the onset of the pandemic. I'm so delighted, therefore, to introduce our first performance at a board meeting since March of 2019. With us tonight is the Valencia High School Vocal Jazz Ensemble, led by choir director Melian Arviti. Students will be treated as to two songs this evening, "The Irish Fursing" and "Lift Your Voice, America." Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for our very own Valencia High School.
Lift up, lift your Oh, beautiful Four spacious stars Amber waves of grain For purple mountain majesties Above the fruit to play America, America God shed his grace on thee And crown thy good And crown thy good with brotherhood From sea to shining Sea Lift up, lift your voice America Lift up, lift your voice My eyes have seen the glory Of the coming of the Lord He is traveling out the vintage where The grace of wrath comes to He has loosed the faithful lightning Of his terrible sword His truth, his truth is marching, marching Truth is a marching Truth is a marching, marching Truth is a marching Truth is a marching, marching Truth is a marching Truth is a marching, marching Truth is a marching Hallelujah His truth, his truth is marching Ah, lift your voice for America Lift up your voice for America America, America America Lift up, lift your voice
Okay, well. I'm going to make an announcement about the upcoming public comment portion of our meeting. And I want to let you know that at this time, we have sixty-one speakers. But let me go over some of the highlights of what we really hope to be even will be for all of us. And that is, first of all, that we those forms, we need to have them turned in by the time we get to public comment. They should be available out of the foyer. And when you have them filled in, please return them to the staff members who are seated over there close to the log. Because when I get to that segment of the general public comment, I won't be accepting any more forms at that point. Second of all, I wanted to say that we do allow thirty minutes for our board for a public comment during our board meeting. I know this is frustrating for some. I've seen that expressed before. I want to just explain that this is our business meeting. It's different than having a town hall where you can spend hours and hours. I'm just trying to inform you on that. But we will do our best to hear everyone. We will talk about how much time that amounts to for speakers and we'll get to that in a short while. And also, normally we accord five minutes for everyone and we allow an additional five minutes if you need it translated. Also, any accommodations for anyone who has anything, whether it's hearing disability, anything that would be something that could accommodate you on, will help you if we can. The more notes we have ahead of time, the better. This board is to serve you the best. Disability, courtesy. We just want to be sure we hear every speaker. We want to be able to not have to be strained to hear or maybe miss something that someone said. So I ask you, as I have before, I ask those who have been here, those who are new, just if you would, let us be respectful of whoever is at the microphone, no matter what their view type. We want to hear everyone's reflection on whatever the concern is. So with that, let's move on to the minutes. We have three sets of minutes because we have two special board meetings since our last regularly scheduled board meeting. Let's start with the first, please. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion recommended by the Superintendent of Schools and Board of Education for the minutes of the regular meeting on September 14th, 2021.
I'll second. Okay, a motion from Mrs. Anderson, a second from Mrs. Blades. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? None? Let's take our vote. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed? Motion has passed unanimously by zero. Item two, the second set, please. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion against the recommendation the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 27th, 2021.
Second. I have a motion from Mrs. Blades, a second from Mrs. Buck. Again, any corrections or additions, we have you. None? Let's take our vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed? Motion has passed unanimously by zero. Going forward, the third set, please. I'll take a motion.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting on October 6th, 2021.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Anderson, second by Mr. Youngblood. Any additions or corrections? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed? Question? Mrs. Freeman, I'm gonna mistake. That was not your thing. Okay, so that will go on record as a four, zero, and one extension for Mrs. Buck. Okay, and now we are at a moment, and that is recognition. So I'm going to send it to the fourth.
Thank you. Good evening, President Freeman, trustees, and executive cabinet members. This evening gives us the opportunity to present the You Are the Advantage Award to a longtime devoted teacher in our school district, Mark Switzer. So Mark, will you please join me? The You Are the Advantage Award recognizes community members, organizations, and employees who embody the district's four core values of excellence, collaboration, integrity, and innovation. For those that have the honor of knowing or working with Mark, you know he epitomizes those very characteristics. For those that do not know him, please allow me to share a little bit more. Mark is receiving the You Are the Advantage Award as he has distinguished himself as an outstanding teacher and partner to the district through his work at El Dorado High School and at the Digital Media Arts Academy, known as DMAA. Mark was first hired by PYLUSD to service a teacher at El Dorado High School in 1997 after earning his teaching credential from Chapman University. He has been a golden hawk ever since. His credential is in social science and he has taught several grade levels. But in 2006, he began teaching video production classes after starting a school film festival in 2003. His passion for the field eventually compelled the school to launch a video production and broadcasting class just two years later. Then in 2011, Mark played an instrumental role in pioneering the Digital Media Arts Academy that we know and love today. Fast forward to now, Mark serves as both a coordinator and instructor for the DMAA program. The academy has grown tremendously in size and popularity and now encompasses four pathways: photography, graphic design, game art design, and of course, broadcast film. This school year, Mark has a full schedule of teaching students in video one, media production, and advanced video and film production. This includes producing Hot Talk, an award-winning weekly news show that is broadcast at the school. Mark has been honored as Teacher of the Year by the Orange County Department of Education and has earned multiple awards for his and his students' work in DMAA. Mark's wife Kathleen also works as a teacher at El Dorado, and their son Owen joined them this year as a freshman. It is safe to say their family bleeds black and gold. When asked about Mark, El Dorado Principal Joey Davis, who is here with us this evening, had this to say. Mark is an amazingly talented teacher. He and the students' weekly video broadcasts are a key piece of the El Dorado high culture. He is an awesome teammate and devoted to celebrating all the great things that our school has to offer. At the district office, we completely agree with Principal Davis's sentiments as Mark has assisted our staff with various video projects for many years. This includes my own back-to-school video at the beginning of this year and our annual Employee of the Year videos. He is always willing to help and makes sure to find a way to involve students or DMAA graduates in this work, guiding them with patience and wisdom in order to produce professional, high-caliber videos for our entire community to enjoy. We are incredibly grateful for his talents and service. You may have heard the same, if a picture is worth a thousand words, then a video is worth a million. If that is true, then Mark's videos and dedication to teaching students broadcast film is worth a billion words to us. We could go on about what he means to our entire school district community, but for now, we will conclude with this note. It is clear that Mark epitomizes the district's four core values with an enduring commitment to excellence, collaboration, integrity, and innovation. So Mark, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, it is our honor to present El Dorado High School teacher, Mark Switzer, with the You Are the Advantage Award. Thank you for your dedication to our entire school.
And I'm very glad that your wife could be here this evening. Were there any other staff that joined us this evening from El Dorado? Well, again, wellness is very important. Again, another way to start off our year to kind of start with some of those very positive moments. Thank you all, and thank you all for your part. Okay. Lauren, it's time for us to work, for us to learn more. Can you please share with us?
Good evening, President Freeman, trustees, Superintendent Dr. James Assas, executive cabinet, community members. I'm happy to be here tonight to share recent happenings from our comprehensive high schools and alternative schools. Over at Frenta Vista Virtual Academy, the year's off to a great start. EBA had two Fun Friday events to okay through third graders with more planned this month in the fourth and sixth grade classes. Fun Fridays allows students to socialize more new schools like coding with robots. The Dreams for Schools STEM classes are underway as well. Classes filled up quickly and started the last week of September. El Camino Royale is excited to have received approval for student-created murals to be placed on the campus reaching this year's theme, Be Here, Be You, Belong. El Camino is seeking membership for the PTSA. Dues are fifteen dollars per year and all welcome to join. El Dorado High School Brandon Kelly Guard, under the direction of Eric Sampson, led the return of the Placenta Heritage Parade this past weekend. Along with the El Dorado cheer, song, and football teams walking with the city bell, illustrating to everyone that our golden hogs are strong together. The nearly two-hundred Brandon Kelly Guard members have worked tirelessly to get ready for the competition season and are looking forward to the upcoming schedule, which includes the Valencia competition and the annual Placenta Riverine flying school district band pageant on Wednesday, November 10. Esperanza High School will host their Vida Elementary Schools at their upcoming football game on Friday, October 15. The school even had ASB football, cheer, and dance students visit these schools during their lunches to play football and teach the young students at dance and cheer for their game. It is a really fun way to get kids involved to their soon-to-be high school community. Esperanza High School recently finished homecoming season and club rush. The school is thrilled to see the level of active student participation this year. Over at Parfue School, October is a busy month for Parfue Panthers. From onsite academic and elective classes to performing arts practice students have had the opportunity to be back on campus working with another. The school's student leadership is gearing up for game night for students in twelfth through from sixth to twelfth grade and during the last week in October. Valencia High School's coffee crew is serving coffee on Monday and Wednesday mornings. What started as an idea to increase communication skills through correlation activities in Ms. Beezy's class has developed into a morning that students sit at the corner each week. Coffee crew has their own very low logo branded aprons made by graphic designer, teacher, Mr. Brian Johnson, loyalty cards, and homemade coffee carts. Sales have increased from ten coffees per week to a hundred coffees per week. Students practice greeting customers, taking orders, and even making special deliveries. Valencia High School also recently celebrated Hispanic culture during National Hispanic Heritage Month with a mariachi performance at lunch. Valencia students Miguel Morales, Diego Morales, along with her sister Ashton Morales, an April student at Valdez Middle School Academy, played mariachi music during lunch. Students were treated to a cultural experience as Valencia honors Hispanic culture and the contributions of the Hispanic community. And lastly, Yorbalenda High School has set record participation numbers for multiple events this school year, including back-to-school night and homecoming. Over eight hundred and fifty parents attended back-to-school night and over a thousand students attended this homecoming dance. Students and community members are eager to get involved in school-wide efforts to get those students connected or paying off. Yorbalenda High School also has two athletic teams curling in the top ten in Orange County, football and women's tennis.
And you've had, obviously, a few months of compiling various reports for us to highlight many things going on in our schools. And at this point, is there anything that you would say that you wish others knew about this school or this area?
As I enter my twelfth and final years as a student in the district, I reflect on how my experiences within the school district has enriched my life and have taught me to become a better individual and to pursue my higher education goals. Throughout these twelve years, I've had the excellent support of teachers, staff, and students who have all encouraged me to become more successful. I would like our community to know that the district schools have always strived to demonstrate respect, responsibility, and integrity within the school-wide community. With each school representing a varying social, cultural, and economic background, everyone is welcome. I feel that the district continues to evolve to meet these ever-changing educational and social needs. As students have returned to their interest in learning, their attitudes have been positive and motivating to continue. I believe that as long as the student is willing to take on the challenge and get involved, the district provides ample opportunities to succeed, such as club sports, tutoring, and community service and leadership. And then I had an example for someone. Her name is Keila Ariano. She's a recent Esperanza High School graduate as part of the class of 2021. She's currently a freshman at UCLA studying neuroscience and also search as Miss Anaheim's outstanding team, 2020-21. She recently started a social impact called an instrumental outreach. And I just, I thought that was a really good article. It's on the Good News Report on the district website. And I think just her and other many people have shown a lot of community service shown. And I thought that her doing this act leaves an impact on students to want to come back from their returns by future generations to do the same.
Thank you.
That's your chair. Our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening again, President Freeman, trustees, and executive cabinet. I am pleased to share that our very own board vice president, Perry Buck, has been selected by the California Department of Education. by the California Department of Education, State Superintendent of Public Construction, and the Child Nutrition Advisory Council as their new school board. According to the Child Nutrition Advisory Council, known as CNAC, the candidate pool for the role was extremely impressive, but Vice President Boxtonage experienced a vision of school health and nutrition, distinguished her as a strong asset for advisement of State Superintendent Tony Burton. The mission of the CNAC is to provide proactive leadership for the enhancement of health and nutrition education for California's youth. We know Vice President Buck will represent PYLUSD and all students across the state well as a part of the council. It was a pleasure to be part of the City of Placenta's annual Heritage Day Festival and Parade this past Saturday. The board and I rode along the parade route in one of our school buses, driven by Danielle Floriano. All of our middle and high school marching bands and color guards performed down Turner Boulevard to the delight of a large crowd of spectators. Thank you to our Transportation Department under the direction of Richard Domenas for ensuring all of our schools arrive to and from the parade safely and on time. We are also grateful to the City of Placenta for including us in this cherished event and for their ongoing support of our entire school district community. Tomorrow, October thirteenth, the district will host our Fourth Annual Women in Industry Event, an inspirational experience here toward empowering the next generations of generation of leaders through future-ready learning. Families and students of all ages are encouraged to attend this event for the opportunity to learn from an esteemed panel of individuals who represent diverse professional sectors. This includes stunt woman, lawyer, and metaphysical science doctoral student Michelle Manu, who will serve as the keynote speaker. The event begins at six thirty PM at the PYLUSD Performing Arts Center at El Dorado High School. Next, our district recently expanded our inter-murals sports offerings to middle school students across all six campuses, including Bernardo, Nora, Kramer, Travis Ranch, Tufry, Valdez, and Yorbalinda. Students have had the opportunity to participate in after-school inter-mural volleyball to learn basic skills, practice, and form teams for our upcoming middle school volleyball tournament hosted at Esperanza High School this Friday, October fifteenth. Thank you to Keith Carmo, the Director of Middle Schools, and his team for organizing this effort, as well as the Esperanza Girls varsity and junior varsity volleyball teams. They will be helping run the event by serving as referees and tournament organizers. Additionally, this week is the week of the school administrator in PYLUSD. School administrators include our hard-working principals and assistant principals, dedicated directors and supervisors, enthusiastic athletic and activities directors, and many more. Each and every day, the reliable leadership of our school administrators plays a crucial role in student and organizational success. To all of these individuals, we say thank you for the extensive amount of devoted work that you do in support of Placenta and the Unified School District. Another item I'd like to share about this evening is the issue of COVID testing for students and quarantine procedures. The California Department of Public Health recently announced that their student testing and quarantining guidelines are merely suggestions and not mandates. I confirm that to be true, but as a reminder, county healthcare agencies may be more restrictive than the state, and that is the case here in Orange County. I have confirmed with Orange County Healthcare Agency that our current testing and quarantining procedures are mandated by the Orange County Healthcare Agency. Therefore, we must continue with our testing and quarantine procedures until such time that Orange County Healthcare Agency changes their mandates. All school district superintendents in Orange County, including myself, are in regular communication with leaders of the healthcare agency to ensure our district's policies and procedures relative to COVID-19 align with both CDP agenda and county. And in fact, we received word from the Orange County Healthcare Agency just this afternoon that they have released revised COVID-19 guidelines. So staff is currently reviewing them to see how they will affect the district, and we will certainly communicate with employees and families once we understand the full implications of these revised guidelines. And finally, on October fourth, I shared a letter to staff and families regarding Governor Gavin Newsom's recent announcement that all K-12 students and staff in California will be required to be vaccinated against COVID-19 for impersonal reasons.
I would ask, as I said in the beginning, I just ask for courtesy, that's all we're doing here.
Starting the term following full approval from the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, so I'd like to share and emphasize a few additional details at this time. The written health order has not been made public by the state for review. As a result, we are still waiting for additional details to become available. However, according to our initial assessments in outside education associations, the mandate will most likely not be effective before July twenty twenty-two at the very earliest. Requirements established by regulation, not legislation, must be subject to exemptions for both medical reasons and personal beliefs. Since the governor's mandate is established by executive order, this means that as of this writing, medical and personal belief extensions will be accepted, assuming that students and staff meet the state's criteria, which has yet to be determined or established. Additionally, there are current legal actions in the California courts regarding K-12 school mandates surrounding pandemic regulations such as vaccines, masks, and quarantine. The courts are scheduled to hear these arguments in November, and the things could change again based on the outcome of these legal actions. Please know that our school district is a strong supporter of personal and parental rights to the fullest extent. With this in mind, I want to thank our entire community again for their patience and understanding as state requirements for all schools and school districts, including private charter schools, continue to shift. We know there are mixed reactions to this announcement, which has generated a lot of questions that we cannot answer until we receive additional details from the state. We are also grateful for your understanding that our school board and district administration are not legally permitted to lessen the requirements we are under from the State of California, California Department of Public Health, and the Orange County Healthcare Agency. However, I can assure you, the district will continue to monitor the situation closely, communicate updates as additional information becomes available. That concludes my report.
All right. So, a short while ago, I indicated that we would have public comments. And we now have sixty-four speakers. In recent times, we have been losing time to, we don't know if we've gone below a minute, but I'm hardening back to the school members of high school. We did that then because we had a hundred speakers plus. Okay, so I would recommend that we do a minute. Is there any objections to that?
I would say go less than a minute. Have a huge agenda, would we do ninety seconds?
We, I guess, with consideration, I will point out, we still have some discussions that could take time. I do want to be sure that we're respectful of everyone, including our audience, both those that are present as well as those tuned in, that I don't think we're at our best if we get to a certain point in the evening, none of us, and we all have the medal coming. But a minute and a half, does that sound agreeable? It's going to mean ninety seconds. Let's not take some of that time right now. Let me say that I'm going to call up, I'm going to call up four people. I've been doing three, but because of the speakers, numbers, that is, I would like to go ahead and call four names at a time so that you know that you're coming up next, and we can maybe move that, that passing time, if I call it, kind of reduce that little compressive, and therefore hear everyone. Please, the other thing I want to reinforce, if you will, is that if I have to stop while someone's talking because we can't hear them, there's echoes from some in the audience, not all of it's some in the audience, it just takes more time. Just be courteous again, that's all we're asking for, so we can hear everyone. So let's go ahead and do ninety seconds. You do have a timer, when you hear your timer go off, do right away, wrap that up. I don't want to have just, oh, perfect. See, that's great, yeah. That's good. When you do debates, they often have that, it really keeps you on cue. Okay, so the point I want to make is that I don't want to have to speak over you if you're continuing to press on when your time has elapsed, okay? So with that, let us begin. The first four speakers to come forward, excuse me, Lori Hinton, Kimberly Carlos, Lindsay Sid, Michelle Waterworth.
Good evening. I live in this district, pay local taxes, and have children who actively attend our schools. For months, concerned parents like me and educators have actively called, written, and met with school board members, school and district administrators, educators, and other parents to share our concerns around bigotry, racism, and classist behavior in our district. We've even heard the brave voices of local students stand up and speak about how they have been treated. I have zero interest in knowing who the kids were that made and shared the derogatory sign directed to Esperanza students recently at YLHS, where my daughter is a student. I have zero interest in knowing how they were punished. Kids make mistakes. What I do know is the statement, "This does not represent the position or feelings of our school or our district," is a narrative that no longer plays out as truth. Your students are our schools, and they are our district. Thus, their actions and words are a reflection of our school, our district, and our society. I can't fathom a more clear sign that we have a problem. I've made multiple phone calls to school administrators, hoping this incident would not be used as an example for punitive punishment. Again, kids make mistakes. But as an example for teaching about micro and macro lessons, classism, and the golden rule, we need to do more to truly make this the land of gracious living, and the first step is acknowledging the problem. Thank you.
Back-to-school night is a whole lot easier than this, I can tell you that. I'd like to begin with gratitude. Thank you, Dr. Elsasser, Dr. Adamson, Board District Leadership Administrators, and Apple, for your tireless commitment to create dynamic campuses in this ever-changing atmosphere that are positive and inspiring to the add. I appreciate you. Thank you, community, for your passion, advocacy, and involvement in your and my children's education. Thank you, colleagues, for your genuine commitment and dedication to our students and collective positive energy to keep moving forward. And thank you, students, for inspiring me every day to be everything you need, to feel noticed, needed, and nurtured. If I have learned anything in my career, it's the importance of understanding and accepting differences. Our community is composed of differences. In education, our diverse learners guide our instruction, our lessons, and our continued education. When we accept and embrace our differences, we build a stronger foundation of education. The one-size-fits-all method of teaching has never been effective. Why should we expect these one-size-fits-all approaches and mandates to work for our children's health, safety, and emotional well-being? As parents, educators, and community members, we know what is best for our children, and we know that accepting our differences and respecting our differences is the most important thing we can do, especially right now. I don't think any educator was prepared for the magnitude of challenges facing our youth. We have incredible work to do, and we need everyone. For this, I'm hoping, as a collective whole, our community can finally unite and bridge our differences for our children.
Can you guys scoot back so we can record? I mean, I don't think you're supposed to be that close.
I just want to start by saying thank you to the three board members that are actually fighting for our children. We know who you are, and we appreciate you. This vaccine that is being forced on our children have not gone through the years of trials like the other vaccines have. There is no data to show long-term effects. It isn't even protecting those who have been vaccinated. You can still get it and transmit it.
Yes.
According to the CDC, the majority of the people who get this virus survive it. Here is the data straight from the website. Ages zero to fourteen have a ninety-nine point nine-nine-three-one percent chance of survival rate. Ages fifteen to forty-four have a ninety-nine point nine-nine-three-one percent chance of survival rate. And you can go on and check the other, they're all in the ninety-nines. There is no science that backs up vaccinating children with this vaccine. If anything, there is data that shows the opposite. There has been young kids that have gotten vaccinated and end up with mitocardiitis, heart inflammation, and I am not willing to risk that on my children. I will be pulling my children from this district if this mandate goes through. And there are lots of areas where they are less ready and willing to use this vaccine. This vaccine should be a choice, a parental choice. The government does not decide for me, the schools do not decide for me. We live in America, the land of the free. My husband and I will decide for my children. I also want to start by thanking the board members who are fighting for my children and myself. Even though one in particular is bad-mouthed on social media constantly, please know there are so many of us that appreciate you and stand behind you. My main purpose for being here today is to let the board know that it is my duty as a parent to research and question everything for the sake of my children. I am not blindly going to trust. From the research I have done, I am a very concerned parent with regards to the vaccine mandate. As much as it will break my heart, I am prepared to pull my children out of this district if the vaccine becomes a requirement. This is not what I want to do by any means, but it's what I need, I will have to do. The most concerning aspect of this vaccine is that there is no long-term data to show how safe it is. The average vaccine goes through clinical trials for three to five years to make sure it is safe. These steps and important data collection processes are being skipped to push through a vaccine that we already know does not stop you from catching or spreading COVID-19. If you are vaccinated and you believe in this vaccine, but you, yet you believe that an unvaccinated person is a danger to you, then your vaccine does not work. People are dying from this vaccine. According to the CDC VAERS website, fifteen thousand nine hundred thirty-seven people have died from getting a COVID-19 vaccine. Last thing I want to say is, I may have to wrap it up. The board, to the board, it takes nothing to join the crowd, it takes everything to stand alone. If we leave our children a world where we never stood up, they'll inherit a world where they can't. Please do what's right for our children.
The next four coming will be Will Rodriguez, Brent D., Kristen M., Stephanie D.
My name is Will Rodriguez, and I have two children that attend Esperanza High School. Since COVID began, I have heard and broken records to follow the science and data. Superintendent and board members, I expect you to follow that for the school district. The science and data is that children are in the lowest-risk group. The negative and unknown side effects from this vaccine outweigh the so-called protection that they are promising. And what Big Pharma does not want to talk about is that natural immunity is far more effective than these vaccines. These mandates are based on fear, politics, and money. The state is run by a tyrant that does not follow his own laws. Just recently, it was reported that one of Newsom's immediate family members has not been vaccinated. This vaccine is such a lifesaving wonder drug by weight, why the excuse of a series of other shots to get first? On a regular basis, lawmakers and big pharma are being exposed for their hypocrisy and benefiting from the cash out COVID-19. Students who are being tested, they are like test subjects harassed by school staff and even arrested for not wearing school, I'm sorry, wearing masks on school grounds. Districts are allowing this agenda and are concerned more with the set policies made by power-driven dictators than the psychological effect it is having on our kids. This is going beyond the narrative of keeping teachers and students safe in classroom. It's a submit and go against your personal choice, your medical choice, religious belief, or stand against tyranny and get fired from your career and being removed from valuable and personal learning for school. Is this really the education system that you guys want?
Your remarks, your time has elapsed.
And stand up for our constitutional rights and our freedom of choice.
I need to have your conclusion, please.
You will be held accountable for your decisions.
I would like to have you sit back.
Laws should be followed across the nation. Policies, vaccine mandate, and mask mandate for the school district.
I want to start by addressing the ethnic studies curriculum that is being mandated by the state. I understand that critical race theory is part of this curriculum. CRT is a political racist. CRT is a political, racist political ideology. It's not academics, and we're asking you as a board, it's still different to take it out. Let's not pit our kids against each other based on their skin color. This is something that you guys can do. As far as vaccine mandates go, yeah, it's a mandate for you guys, but you don't have to enforce it. Give us a way out, because the answer is no.
This is specifically for the superintendents and all the assistants. You have made it very clear at this point you will make no effort to stand up for our children. You have shown us every step of the way. You will carefully follow the recommendations and suggestions without careful consideration or thought for how this will affect our children. Just a reminder, these recommendations are not law. Tonight, I did listen. You did say that you don't agree with some of the mandates. However, you can do something. You can be our voice. Us going individually to Sacramento does nothing. It has not in the past, and it won't. As a board, as a district, all the superintendents can get together and help us be our voice to the governor's office. Recently, you made a statement, Mr. Superintendent, you said unequivocally, "The Placentia Yorbalina Unified School District condemns any and all forms of discrimination." However, you have denied my request for an agenda item that will stop discrimination. By the way, this agenda item was not lesser, less restrictive. It was more restrictive. I have also contacted the Orange County Healthcare Agent, Department of Health. They said we can go more restrictive. You said it was inappropriate for us to do this. I wanted, I was asking for testing for vaccinated also, because they can be directly exposed, go to school without testing, and go to all extracurricular activities while a not fully vaccinated child cannot go to any of that. Please help us fight this mandate. Any pharmaceutical that is mandated as a one-size-fits-all is absurd. You especially should know how each child is different. That alone should raise red flags to you. You should be here for our children, not for anything else. Thank you.
I recognize that you, as a board, are up for a large battle in the months ahead. And I know you have two choices. One is to choose the battle that is the right thing to do and stand up to the state with their ridiculous mandate. You do have voices that collectively will be loud. All of us here tonight with signs and shirts, and many who are not here tonight will join you in the battle. We may seem like a small pebble in this big state, but we could be the pebble that takes down the giant. The crazy, passionate, dedicated families of the PYL will support you, fight alongside you, and do all we can every step of the way. Your second choice is to not take a stand. And you will still face a battle, but it will start on the day that our kids are no longer allowed on their campuses. Your battle will be the future of this district in the wake of so much loss. You will lose teachers, countless students, but you will also lose a lot of helpers. In this audience, you have Fall Festival chairman, book fair volunteers, school site representatives, PTA members, room parents, noon aides, classroom helpers, youth club members, PYL staff. Passionate, available, invested people who help to make this district what it is. You will lose all of us. And you will fight the battle without our encouragement, our help, and our unwavering dedication. The battle is yours for the choosing. Stand up now or try and make up for it later. Who knows? You might be in those seats for such a time as this.
Amber Griffin. Judy DeJardine. Hopefully, first two heard their names. Shari Palakie. Karen, it looks like. And I mentioned Amber Griffin and Judy DeJardine.
This is the decision, the COVID-19 decision, symptom decision tree that I'm talking about.
My name is Shari Palakie, and I'm representing over 62 families in our district who have been discriminated against by PYLUSD for medical reasons. I'm officially putting all five trustees and Dr. Elsasser on notice of discrimination. You are not at liberty to violate the rights of our students. This establishment is prohibited by law from discriminating against any individual based on age, gender, ethnicity, medical condition, or religious beliefs. The definition of discrimination is that practice of unfairly treating a person or group of people differently from other people or groups of people, which is exactly what you're doing with the COVID symptom decision tree. We know this symptom tree was created by Orange County Public Health. Our families are not asking you to defy it or lessen it, but rather make the path the same for all students, which would in turn make PYLUSD not only compliant, but actually stricter where safety is concerned. Currently, after a COVID exposure, unvaccinated and vaccinated children are able to resume classes. Now, the unvaccinated children are being denied equal access to extracurricular activities at school, including sports and activities within the community setting for 14 days, regardless of testing negative for COVID-19. Our families demand a swift change of this policy or intend to take legal action against each of you and PYLUSD. Thank you.
Hi. I've never spoken before, but today I decided it was necessary so that everyone can see exactly what is now considered to be a domestic terrorist by the teachers' unions and the current administration. Because I oppose my kids being taught that they are oppressors of people of color simply because they're white, and because I oppose children of color being taught that they are oppressed simply because of their skin color, all under the phony guise of ethnic studies, I am a domestic terrorist. And the irony is that I've been given this label by the very people who looked at rioters and protesters nothing more than peaceful protesters. The last thing these people should be controlling is our children's health. They have zero right to dictate what gets injected into my kids. I personally know of many people who have been damaged and even killed by these vaccines. Who's going to be held liable for all the adverse reactions these kids might suffer? I will pull my kids out of this district and out of the state if necessary to protect them from this unconstitutional and immoral mandate, should this mandate come to fruition. I'll pull them, and I won't be alone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Judy DeJardine. I'm here as a grandmother. I have grandchildren that are in the school district. And the reason that I am against this mandatory vaccination is that you have not even considered people that have had COVID and have an immunity. Also, this drug has not been FDA-approved. And the side effects, some of them are severe. I am a retired dental hygienist. I know a hygienist that got vaccinated, and now she's got tremors. She will never practice again. Also, when the police and the firemen and nurses and paramedics do not want to get vaccinated, what does that tell you? It tells you there's a red flag. I feel the government has absolutely neglected to tell the public and the community how they can really take care of themselves with the vitamin D, your immunity, the zinc. So, please, please, again, be the voice for us and protect our children. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Amber Griffin. And I am here tonight to let you know that mandating an experimental vaccine on a population that has a 99.9% survival rate with zero long-term studies and very little short-term studies, those of which actually do show some severe side effects, is absolutely ludicrous. My three children will not be participating in this medical experiment and will be pulled from California Public Education if exemptions will not be allowed. We are only one family, but there are hundreds of others who feel the same. And when a thousand or more kids are pulled, teachers will lose their jobs. We will not be putting our kids at Buena Vista or Parkview. We will be pulling them. They deserve real education, a person. We need to work together here. We are not here to fight you, but we will fight for our children. We love our teachers, and we love our district. We do not want to have to pull our kids. Teachers, you need to start contacting your unions and let them know that your jobs are on the line. They need to stand up and use their weight to influence at the county and state level. And the board, you need to stop being cowards and just bowing down, doing whatever they told you to do. But what is right for our kids? Speak up and speak out. It's time you help us help our kids.
The next four speakers, Craig M., then Pam Webb, Alice Archer, Murco Currie.
So, my name is Dr. Craig Mortensen. I do functional medicine, and this is my wheelhouse. I see chronic health issues all the time. I'm getting one to two new patients every week that are having results from these vaccines. They are not safe. And they're being told that it's in their head. Don't worry about it. It's going to go away. It's BS. Last year in The Lancet... They talked about VRRs and ARs. Basically, it came down to the number needed to vaccinate for kids is 500 to 1. They need 500 vaccines to prevent one kid from getting COVID. That's not dying from COVID. That's from getting the sniffles, getting a cough, right? Maybe a little fever. But it's not talking about all the possible reactions that these kids can get. And... To ask a kid to risk their health for me or anybody else in here is BS.
I have three kids in the district. People ask me why I'm anti-vaccine. I'm not. All my kids are fully vaccinated with the VeriCy proven vaccines that work. Let's take a poll. How many of you sitting in here have seen an outbreak of polio? Anyone? No, because that vaccine works. This is not a vaccine. This is a flu shot. They're already saying it's way... It causes way more, way more side effects than it's worth for children. My kids are six times more likely to be diagnosed with a battle-related myocarditis than to end up in the hospital with COVID. Six times. That's ridiculous. Do not tell me you're going to jab my kids. It's not happening. And for those who say, "Well, it's about the spread." Adults are here to protect the children, not the other way around. Another point. What happened to my body, my choice? Oh, it didn't fit your narrative anymore, right? My body, my choice. My child doesn't have his own choice. I am his parent. I will protect him. And his body is my choice, and they are not getting this jab. I'm just being honest today. There are 73 million children in this United States. 500-something have died from COVID. Is that really rational to vax every child? I don't think so.
Recently, in an article, teacher unions throughout the US claim to be looking out for the best interests of their teachers, students, and are deep... But there's a deeply political influence into what's going on right now. That's just, I've just become aware of that. I didn't know that. This is only my third school board meeting. And I just feel like, as parents, I'm a grandparent. My kids are done. I just don't want to see you guys buy into the political pull. I mean, as everyone said, you guys have a voice, and you're here to look out for our kids. These kids are the future. And masks, and vaccines, and critical race theory, and all of those things are not part of what you guys are supposed to be teaching. Schools are to teach reading, writing, and arithmetic. And you guys need to stick up for our children and make that happen for us. We're here. There's a lot of people here tonight that are begging you to do your job and to not be pulled by the political scams that are going on.
Thank you for having me. I'm a software engineer, which means it's my job to make rational, logical decisions. And I'm good at it. There's nothing rational or logical about enforcing a vaccine mandate for schoolchildren. From all the evidence I've collected, it's quite the opposite, irrational and illogical. First, according to the CDC, only about 0.057% of all COVID-related deaths in the United States are from children since the pandemic began. The CDC didn't even disclose if there were any underlying conditions in these children. Secondly, everyone already knows about myocarditis as a side effect. But as a father of three girls, the most personally concerning and yet under-reported side effect outlined by the Mayo Clinic, is changes in the menstrual cycle of health. The same hasn't been enough time for when vaccines first became available, to even give birth, let alone study the effects of the vaccine on reproductive health. The Mayo Clinic calls for more research into the matter. The NIH website calls for volunteers to further advance research into the effects of vaccines. Shouldn't this research be done prior to injecting our kids with an expert vaccine? Third, the argument for people who are for kids' vaccination is that it helps stop the spread. That's exactly why I chose to be vaccinated instead. If I'm vaccinated, and the teachers choose to be vaccinated, and if the children don't suffer as adults do in COVID cases, there is no reason to vaccinate kids. Everyone knows the risks by now, but it's our choice how to mitigate those risks. It's my responsibility as a father, our responsibility as parents, to protect our kids, assume risks in life that are too dangerous for them, and not inoculate them with experimental drugs that may do more harm than good. I risk harm to children for everybody else's sake. Thank you.
Next speaker is coming forth Rebecca Clement. Followed by Andy Falco, followed by Stephanie Williamson, followed by Patrick Joyce.
Hey, bear with me. I'm really out of my comfort zone here. I wanted to be present tonight so that I could stand here and look at you and ask that you simply do the right thing, which is to stand behind the families and the teachers of this community and stand up against these vaccine mandates in our school. Our governor has unilaterally revoked our right to make choices for our children and their health. My common sense and my mamacat is telling me that something is really wrong here. And so, I'm not hesitant to vaccinate her. I'm very confident and steadfast in my decision, and that is known. I'm declining on her behalf. This is Penelope. She's my daughter. She's seven. She's so smart, and she's healthy, and she's thriving in her new school. Now, you want to force her to be injected with a substance that we don't know the effects of. They haven't been studied enough. They have not proved themselves to do what a vaccine is supposed to do. They're actually causing more harm than good. And they're causing more harm than actually preventing the contraction and transmission of the virus. And in our children, they have basically 100% chance of surviving that virus. This whole charade is so that she could simply participate in the life that I have worked so hard to give her. I'm a single mom. I'm a sonographer of 11 years, and I'm barely holding on to my career as we speak. As adults and as parents, we may have had some wiggle room in our toys, but when it comes to our kids, if we tell you no, it means no. It means no today, tomorrow, and next school year, too. The teachers and parents are coming together. The teachers and parents are coming together. We'll pull our kids from school and we'll figure it out.
Hi, I'm Rebecca and I'm a grandma too. And I have five children in the school districts. And everybody, the thing that everybody who said before me, I agree with. But I just wanna urge you to fight for our kids that we don't want them to be vaccinated with a poison that we don't know. And I wanna read this. "By authority of the Nuremberg Code on medical experimentation, I do hereby exercise my right to refuse to submit to or administer the COVID-19 experimental gene therapy injected heretofore known as the COVID-19 vaccine. Medical personnel are hereby put on notice that any further effort to coerce, intimidate, persuade, trick, or compel me to receive any experimental gene therapy injection implicates you as aiding and abetting in the capital offense of a crime against humanity." Thank you.
If I may for clarification, I just wanted to ensure because I capture, you know, some of the comments that each of you made. Um, the speaker who was just here was Rebecca Carras. As you read, go back to your seat. You're Rebecca Carras. Okay. Then, was it Stephanie who spoke moments before that? With the daughter?
Alex.
Didn't have your name. Alex?
Alex.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to be sure I captured right. Thank you very much for that.
Hello, my name is Andy Falco. And we've got some brilliant speakers giving you stats, talking about all the things that we need to do as parents, as parents, not the government. The government does not parent our children. We do. And I've been here for the last six or so meetings, live streaming them for many people to watch that couldn't make it here. And I've been praying for a, um, an attendance like we have tonight. We have many patriots that are here today because they care about our kids. They don't want the government parenting our children. Uh, the one thing I am afraid of, though, is that there are many people that wanna homeschool their kids. They wanna take them into private schools. They wanna take them into church schools. I would just hope, because I have six children, two in elementary school, one in junior high, two in high school. I know I don't look like it, but I do. Uh, but, um, I can't pull my kids out of school. I work full-time. I travel a lot. And I, and I ju... It's just not possible for me. I'm hoping that I know the vaccine is the red line for many of you and it probably is for me, too. But I'm hoping you won't pull your children out too soon. Look at us. We're winning. We have 2022 coming up. We have two people that we need to get off of the school board. Freeman and Buck would not, would like nothing more than half of you to leave, for us to leave, so that they will have an empty room again. We need to stay here. We need to continue. Let's continue to fight. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick Joyce. I just wanna thank the board for my first school board meeting. It's been a pretty lively one. So, from your website, your, your role as a board member is to act both as leaders and bridges between the community and the professionals who manage our school. I hope you can be that bridge for our community right now regarding this vaccine mandate. Let's first start off by me stating, I am vaccinated for COVID-19. My children have all the vaccinations needed to attend school. It's been a trying 18 months for all of us. Every one of us have had stories of, of, of losing someone or being challenged with the current circumstances. So, I'm gonna do my best to remove the emotions from this right now and focus on what we did at the beginning, the law, right? COVID-19 vaccines and personal belief exemptions are not required right now for any child per SB 276. Because the school district cannot legally add a vaccine to the child... California Department of Health to add it per the legislative process, which includes discussion from panel of experts and open public testimony. To my knowledge, that has not happened.
Right on. Good job.
I wasn't ready for this, so, um... But I'm just gonna say that I feel like this comes down to money.
Can I, I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep track. Are you Stephanie?
I am Stephanie.
Thank you.
Sorry. I appreciate it. Uh, I feel like this just comes down to money, which is the root of all evil. I recently saw something that, uh, a senior in the district receives $4 million if this vaccine is implemented. And I just wanna say that, um... I was making breakfast for my husband this morning and I looked at him and I was like, if you had the choice, or you, if you were in the position for $4 million or thousands, hundreds of thousands of children's health in your power, what would you choose? Obviously, we would choose the safety of the children. But when it comes down to it, that $4 million, even if it is awarded to the system, this district, it would be the most miserable money ever allotted because of the fact that it's gonna damage a lot of children, hurt a lot of children. The science, all of it is, um, it's unprovable. I thank you for the people that are on the board that are fighting for us, so, um... And all of you guys coming out, I really feel like this is my first board meeting. My son's at New Oakdale. But I feel like if we stand together in unity, um, we can fight this. But thank you again, you guys.
Um, the next intended to come up, Tiffany Dale, followed by Samia High, Mike E., and Ed Gunn. I'm sorry. I apologize and maybe some employee. Tiffany Dale, followed by Samia High, followed by Mike E., and lastly, Ed Gunn.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Dale. Not an anti-vaxxer, not a domestic terrorist, not QAnon. I'm here to encourage our board to fight for our kids against this experimental vaccine. School districts across the state are already experiencing a huge loss. Are you guys ready for the loss? Because we're ready to pull our kids. Union rats, you need to fight for your teachers and students. You need to tell Newsom and the union, we want the same pass as the prison guard union. When you start picking and choosing who gets the vaccine, that's not science. Parents, teachers, and students, we need to hold the line. Talk to your community. Stand together. I encourage you to keep everyone home on October 18. At this stage, we will tell legislation and Newsom, we will not comply.
This is intimidating. My name is Samia High. Um, I was an educator in this district and I'm now, I am a parent, I have been. Um, I would like to specifically address not vaccines, so, I will leave that to all of you. Um, I'm here to talk about the discussion of our critical race theory in ethnic studies. As you can see, I'm not white. And, um, I'm here to discuss how important that is in our community. Um, specifically, I would like to note from Blades in Young Blood, if you understand what critical race theory is, if you have practical knowledge or background. And if you would please go ahead and really look into that before you say, let's ban it. Um, from what we've read about, it actually comes from the state of California. It's a California mandate. Um, it actually is standard. It's based off of what educators would like. By educators, by professionals. So, the resolution is overreaching. It affects, it does affect student speech in classroom and freedom of speech, as well as teachers' professional capacity. Teachers are professionals, just in case you forgot. By attempting to remove vital parts of actual history, this resolution contradicts the goals of PYOSD to provide a rigorous, well-rounded education, education to all students. And I really urge the other board members to argue for those of us who don't look like everyone else in the world.
Again, let's, let's not be disrespectful of one another. It doesn't serve a purpose. Let's continue to hear what everyone else is saying. Great.
Yeah, thank you. So, good evening. My name's Mike. I've got two children who have been students in this district for 12-plus years now. So, I'll just start by saying, this isn't a political stand. This isn't a pro-vaccine or an anti-vaccine stand. This is about freedom of choice and parental rights in our children. All right? So, first, it was two weeks to slow the spread and distance learning. We complied. Then it was mask mandates and we reluctantly compromised so our kids could come back to school. However, this mandate is where we draw the line. Not just me, not just the people in this room, but the majority of this community draws the line at this mandate. So, if the board chooses to comply with this illegal mandate, the goalpost is simply just gonna get moved again. Where do we go next? Is it get the booster if you wanna come back? When does it end? Right? It's time to take a stand and we need your help to fight this battle at the county and the state level. Our voices alone are not enough. We need your support and we need your help. Uh, Mrs. Freeman, can you tell me the board's position on bullying and discrimination, please?
I did not make the announcement, but there is no back-and-forth dialogue with any of the speakers, but...
Yep, fair enough. Fair enough. So, if you don't help fight this battle against medical discrimination and bullying of our children, you're complicit and you will be held accountable. You're elected public officials. You work for us, the people. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Ed Gunn, 44-year resident of Yorkville, Linda. First statement. Teachers, good. Union, bad. When unions choose, students lose. You wonder why your kids have to wear masks in school? The unions. Why were you out of school for a year? The unions. That is why. Unions, bad. Okay? All right. I've had the Kung-Fu virus from China. My antibodies are 27 times more protective than Chi... than the China virus serums, according to the 700,000-person study out of Israel recently. Everybody, I urge you to call the county board supervisors and urge the firing of Officer Chow from the medical unit. CRT, yes, we know what it is. It's a Trojan horse for tearing down America. It teaches the most important thing about you is your color. I urge you to ban CRT from our schools. It questions the very social foundations of our country, equality theory, legal reasoning, enlightenment, rationalism, and neutral principle of constitutional law. CRT is ridiculous. CRT is subversive. Get rid of it and ban it.
The next speakers will be Sarah Phillips, followed by Vanessa Danny, followed by Elizabeth Rucio, and followed by Eunice Rucio. And I'm going to just interject. We're not even halfway through the conference. Let's continue on, but just remember, we have others to listen to and let's try to continue in a respectful place. Thank you. Okay, continue.
Good evening, board members. Dr. El Sasser, Dr. Adamson. Thank you, President Freeman, for coming to see the library display for Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, I'm Sarah Phillips. I'm the librarian at Yorkville High School. This month, the library, uh, is acknowledging the LGBT History Month and Disability Awareness Month. Library displays, both physical and virtual. Displaying the books that we have is encouraging students to read. They're checking out books from the display and it warms my librarian heart. Fostering reading is one of my main goals. Um, a bigger budget from the district would be awesome to keep library collections fresh and interesting for students. Independent reading is a number-one way to increase student attention. Twenty-five cents a student and that does not buy very many books. So, something to consider. Um, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Rucio and talking can get ridiculous as a Latina that I have to come over here and talk about critical race theory. That is my daughter Vanessa Danny. Vanessa Danny, go ahead and raise your hand. My ex-husband is Caucasian. My child should not be taught in school that I am oppressed. I have never been oppressed. My daughter does not have white privilege. We are supposed to be nice as a people and not teach our children that because of the skin color, we are oppressed. I have never felt oppressed in America in my life. I also wanna say that I've spoken to principal stills at Valencia, Yorkville, Valencia District, Valencia High School. Um, my son, who is at Bar City now, is saying that he's worried that if he doesn't take the vaccine, he won't be playing football anymore. He should not have to be worried about getting this vaccine and, and playing a sport. He's an amazing athlete and I will not stand for that. I have five children in the facility in Yorkville District and I will not be vaccinating my children ever.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Vanessa. I'm a junior at Valencia High School. Um, I just wanted to come to speak on behalf of my generation. Um, I miss seeing smiles in my classroom. It used to brighten my day. Um, I've never had a full year of high school. I am a junior now and COVID started my freshman year. Um, and it's really disappointing to know that I won't be able to graduate my senior year without this vaccine. Um, and I am really happy to see so many people on our side because I feel like this is really necessary to be able to not go to school just because I don't wanna take a vaccine. That it's not even proven to work for anyone, actually. Um, and my mother, who just spoke before me, is not a domestic terrorist. She is...
Um, I don't have you standing here to speak. Are you one?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
My name is Eunice Rucio. I'm a fourth grader in plus. I'm also a prophet of most high god. Jesus is truly eternal. Unless you train and become like little children, you will never enter the kingdom of heaven. Therefore, whoever takes the lonely position of his child is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven. And whoever welcomes such child in name welcomes me. If anyone causes one of these little ones, those who believe in me to stumble, it would be better for them to have a large milestone hung on their neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea, letting the drowning begin. Matthew 18:6.
Good job, Mom.
Good job, guys. Good job! We have following speakers. We have, uh, Gaster Castellanos, Paul Grigalski, followed by Emily Rozel, followed by Nicole Avila.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. Uh, very quickly, I'll just go through a couple of quick things. Um, just as many in the audience don't like being referred to as QAnon and domestic terrorists and so forth and so on, there are people on the other side who passionately believe in the efficacy and the safety of these vaccines. That does not make them Marxist-Leninists, does not make them communists, does not make them socialists or loony liberals. It just means that your fellow Californians disagree with you about that. And we just had a referendum on the governor's recall that showed that a vast majority of Californians disagree with you. And a majority of your neighbors in Orange County disagree with you. Uh, finally, uh, you know, there was an earlier speaker talked about, made their remark about, about Kung-Fu. You know, I would hope that we would not do that kind of thing. We've already had far too many attacks on our Asian-American brothers and sisters based on that kind of racist rhetoric. So, please just don't do it. And, and the notion that, that people are good and unions are bad, that's just ridiculous. And I, and I wish we didn't have to go through that. Union brothers and sisters are, are middle-class, hard-working people, just like many of you in this room. And finally, uh, the Californians who disagree with you, they are not your enemy. They just disagree.
Good evening, board. Um, I'm not gonna identify myself by race or, uh, or anything else in order to, uh, try to provide more strength or merit in my argument. So, I'd just like you to consider what I say, uh, based on the merit of what I say. I think one of the previous speakers said, yeah, truly, there is a Trojan horse before the gates of this district and this community. And you, board members, you are the gatekeepers. And what I want to ask you and submit these questions to you is you consider an action for critical race theory and letting this Trojan horse through those gates? I want you to submit, and I'm gonna submit two questions to you. Number one is, what child will benefit from critical race theory? And what I mean by that is, what child, what seventh grader will benefit from learning that based on the color of his skin and solely the color of skin, he is an oppressor? He is a victimizer? Whether he likes it or not, or whether he knows it or not? What would benefit a tenth grader to learn that based on the color of his skin, he's a victim? He's oppressed. She's oppressed. And whether they like it or not, or know it or not, that's the way it is. Who benefits from that? Nobody. Next, my question is, how does CRT change anything? Because CRT says, how do we change something? We change it by referring to the one immutable characteristic that somebody has, the color of their skin. That's gonna bring about change. So, the charging horse is before you. If you guys let it in, it's on you.
Uh, just four bullet points tonight. First of all, please approve the lights at the LDO. Thank you. Second, um, I'm asking our school board members to ban CRT in our district tonight. It is completely detrimental to individual progression development. Now, when I first came to a board meeting in June, and it was my first board meeting, it's terrifying. Um, but they reopened, they voted, the board voted to reopen the ethics curriculum. And I remember a lot of folks in green that night that said they were against CRT. And it's really a shame and disappointing that you're now saying you want it. We remember. Uh, third, we need to really limit technology in the classroom. Uh, we need to get back to teaching and involve parents back in the classrooms. My son has 35 bodies in his fourth-grade class. It's past due for small classrooms where teachers can teach and students can emotionally connect with their teachers and peers. Lastly, the vaccine mandate by Newsom is a violation of our rights as American citizens. We fully expect, once the Senate is in session, the exemptions will be revoked. There are senators bragging about it.
Yes.
Orange County Board of Education has stated they are with parents and plans during Newsom. Will you? Parents are here tonight to stand up for our kids and their right to their medical freedoms. Will you? We are here to defend our constitutional rights and freedoms given by the Constitution of the United States of America. Stand with us and act. Now's the time, because tomorrow will be too late.
Hi, I'm a mother of three kids in this district, and I would like our PYLUSD school board members to stand up to the mandates from our governor. I have a degree in genetics from UC Davis and have worked for a pharmaceutical company, Amgen. I was taught about vaccines and how they work. I understand how they work. The COVID vaccine is not like any other vaccine. It is mRNA injected into your body that your own cells then make virus proteins for, sorry, for your immune system, and then attack. Kind of like an autoimmune disease of your own making. It's new technology. So, how long should one wait to determine if something is safe? The 15 minutes? The 15 hours as you sit there while you take the shot? How about 15 days? 15 weeks? 15 months? What length of time does it take to establish the safety of a drug? Johnson &amp; Johnson has Zeralto pulled from the shelves after hundreds of deaths and paid 775 million in settlements. It was made available to the public in 2011, and lawsuits began eight years later. Chantix became available in 2006, a smoking cessation pill made by Pfizer that 15 years later is now being pulled from the shelves. Xantac has been around since 1988 and is now being pulled from the shelves after proving it causes cancer in the bladder, colon, and prostate. The list goes on and on. Johnson &amp; Johnson's baby powder linked to ovarian cancer. The Vino and Neutrogena sunscreen by Johnson &amp; Johnson linked to leukemia. Protonix by Pfizer. So many. I think it's great the CDC is projecting a polio-like virus in our children this winter. I wonder what's going to be the cause? The companies do not care about the small-million-dollar payouts for injuries when Johnson &amp; Johnson made $82 billion last year and Pfizer made $51 billion. How long are you willing to wait before a fully-tested vaccine is available? Personally, I would like to wait at least a hot minute.
The next floor, Cory Avila. Uh, we don't pass on anyone, but thank you. I'll make that interest to not... Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, uh, so Lori Avila, followed by Courtney Ja, followed by Austin Fudalai, Vayen, and Heather. We're just a little over halfway.
Hi, I'm Lori, and I shall begin my comment. Now, please study this tonight, though will be a test tomorrow.
I originally had a speech prepared that stated results from Pfizer and Moderna's vaccine trials, as well as the COVID-19 mortality rate among children ages 5 to 17. But the truth of the matter is that anyone can find facts in support of the vaccine or facts against the vaccine. Because of the lack of transparency and the lack of access to pure scientific, unadulterated data available that is not biased by a specific agenda one way or the other, paired with the scientific community in which the very proven immunity that comes from having COVID-19 continues to be ignored, finding the truth is a challenge, to say the least. As a parent, I've spent months researching the vaccines and their testing. What we do know is that children ages K through 12 are the lowest risk of adverse outcomes from vaccine, or, excuse me, from COVID, and that the known and unknown risk of the vaccine far outweigh the risks for this age group. Since this board voted to petition the California Department of Health on parents that have to make masks optional, it'd be unconscionable that you wouldn't do the same for COVID vaccinations, which are far more invasive and potentially harmful. We are demanding that you stand with parent choice and the Orange County Board of Education to fight COVID-19 vaccine mandates. If you should decide to go along with the COVID vaccine mandate and not put my child's safety first, I will be pulling her from this district. If it comes down to a vote, for those of you in favor of the vaccine mandates, you can expect this to be your last term on this board.
So, I was gonna come up here and talk facts and stats and Pfizer and all the bad stuff here, but everyone's covering that pretty well. I feel like we're here for you guys, for you guys to fight for us and our children. And that's what we want to see from you. You go on your website, you guys say a bunch of good stuff, tell us how much you love the kids. You want this great environment. What type of great environment have you guys created for our kids in the last 18 months? Children are falling behind. This is gonna be the lost generation. There are students struggling. Parents have to work. They can't stay home with their kids all day and do online learning. And that seems to be your scapegoat, to be able to get out. Well, at least you could do this. That is not acceptable, and we expect more from the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I have two... Can you hear me? I have two children at Valencia High School who are having a great experience. And I have always homeschooled my kids, and I transitioned them to high school, because I loved high school. And Thomas Jefferson said, "If the law is unjust, a man has not only right to disobey it, he is obligated to do so." A mandate is not a law. To mandate an experimental shot on anyone is unconstitutional, unlawful, un-American. You were elected to fight for our kids. You were elected to protect our kids. Fight for choice, which includes everyone. That includes everyone. Choice. Stand up for our constitution. Now we have to fight for it. Um, you have attorneys. Use them now. Or you will lose them, meaning the students. You've already lost 1,600 students this year. If a vaccine mandate is enforced, that number of students lost will increase exponentially, which affects our teachers and our district immensely. C.S. Lewis said, "Since it is so likely that children will meet cruel enemies, let them at least have heard of brave knights and heroic courage." Otherwise, you are making their destiny not brighter, but darker. Fight for this unlawful mandate with all you have for our kids. The future of our district depends on it, and it depends on you. We'll be brave and fight.
Um, the next speaker to come forth would be Mark Fury, followed by Paul Kunkel, uh, followed by Tina M. Drucker, followed by Sue...
I'll have my one-minute speech, now my 90 seconds. My name is Mark Fury, and I've lived in Yorba Linda since fifth grade. My entire focus tonight is on public participation. I think we can all agree on one thing. The last board meeting did not reflect well on the public, the district, or the board of directors. We all need to share responsibility, and I urge the audience to show greater restraint so we can make progress. The public feels that the actions shown by the board do not in any way reflect the promises all of you made during your campaigns. I have quotes from each of you, but no time to read them. The good news, we all believe in public participation. However, there's a lack of trust on both sides. I strongly urge the board to include public participation as a special agenda item at the next board meeting and allow a dedicated 30 minutes of public comment on this one important subject. I'm putting you in a tough position on purpose. If you do not agree, this is a crucial item to be immediately placed on the agenda, you're sending an unmistakable message that you do not really care about the parents or your campaign promises. I want to remind everyone about the role of the board. I've looked at other bylaws for Orange and Bray School Districts, and I found a great definition of the role of the school board. The governing board has been elected by the community to provide leadership and citizen oversight of the district. The board will ensure that the district is responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of the communities. I do not see the teachers union on that list. If you are guessing which district adopted this definition, look no further, it's the Placentia Yorba Linda School District. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Paul Kunkel. I have a couple of kids in, um... Anyways, uh, one daughter that decided to go to high school, a different high school this year because of harassment at another school. Um, the school board didn't do anything, didn't fight for us. And, um, here now, I'm seeing more of the same stuff at a whole 'nother school. And it's, it's pretty sad because they don't, because they're standing up for our kids. They wanna, we want them to turn out to be good citizens, to be strong, to go out there and earn money and make America even better than it, it could be, even better. And I'm just... I'm, you make me sad. I, I pray every night for my child. And, uh, if things don't start changing, you know, we're gonna be looking for someplace else. And I think, you know, um, that leads to a whole lot of loss from a whole lot of good parents that, you know, give their time, their money. I can't even tell you how much money I've spent for my kids to do sports and to do all of the activities that I, I think are supposed to be covered. But nope, we pay for them. And it's, things need to change. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, you guys. Um, so I just wanted to point out something. I had so many, many things I wanted to talk about tonight in my usual one-minute. So, I'm happy for the 1 minute 30 seconds that we were allotted. But as I watched the kids' choir come out, it was beautiful. But they came out with their masks on. They stood in the front. They took their masks off to sing. When they got done, they put their masks on. The board wouldn't shake their hand because they might have COVID. And they walked back with their masks on to the back room. However, and I'm not discounting Mr. Switzer, the teacher, but when he came out, he had no mask on. He was sitting here, he walked up. He had no mask on. And he talked. And then the board came, he shook everyone's hand. He even went up on the stage with everybody and shook all their hands. And then they stood shoulder to shoulder and took a photo without a mask! I'm like, I really felt like I was watching CNN. We will come for your jobs. This is political, it is obvious. I am a critical thinker, I'm an attorney, and I'm telling you right now, none of this adds up. That was the most hypocritical thing I've ever seen. You shook all these people's hands, but the poor kids do not silence them. You are evil. And the two of you, you will be gone.
Please do not mandate the COVID vaccine for our children. Our children are not mice. Follow my words. Experimental COVID vaccine. This means that if you took the vaccine, you are part of an experiment. We would all do well to remember that America has a longstanding history of using its own people as lab rats.
of using its own people as lab rats. Not so long ago, the U.S. experimented on blacks, telling them that they were receiving treatment for syphilis, when in fact, they were not. No one was ever prosecuted for doing the three hundred and ninety-nine black men to death. Follow the science, I guess. You're gonna love this next one. You wanna know where the Mediterranean diet came from? The WHO exposed healthy men to hepatitis. Perhaps we were on the edge of a liver disease epidemic. Also, U.S., the U.S. infected men with gonorrhea by pumping bacteria into men's privates. How about following the science on that one? All in the name of science. Leave our children alone. They mean the world to us. My six grandchildren will be pulled from school. We are a family of teachers. We got them all covered. But I'll tell you, please, think in that way again. It's important. Okay, the next individuals to come forth would be Kathy Satchel, Hannah Lane, Hannah M., Lada Gunn.
I say it's very hard for me to, after the lady that wore the mask, but then hear her. Last board meeting, I talked to you about the ridiculous vaccine mandates. This time, I'm going to talk about the mask mandate. My name is Kathy Satchel. I was a teacher for thirty-two years. I'm retired right now. I had a daughter here, and I also taught at the Placentia York Valinda School District. And may I say, when I, that was my first teaching position. And I, after that, I thought, boy, education is very political, isn't it? Anyways, I am in an area where you will have a 2022 vacancy. And I intend to apply for that vacancy. I know all of you probably know Dr. Ben Carson. He has worn a mask for his surgeries. But he says there should be no mask mandate for our children in school.
Yes!
Masks are anti-science, anti-liberty, immoral, and illegal. Further, doctors without borders also said they were ineffective. And I have found very much evidence of that. The COVID virus is one thousand times smaller than a hair follicle.
I do need to have you wrap that up.
So, do you think they're effective? And stop the humane, inhumane procedures on these masks and the mask mandate. Thank you. I'm a conservative patriot.
Here are our next speaker. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I was just telling you, I'm not Pam Lane. I know you're trying to drag them out.
I know who you are, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, the district has received seventy-two million dollars in federal and state COVID funds. You've used twenty-five million so far. I urge you not to use those funds if it would further erode enrollment. And Linda Adamson, I know you're really a fan of digital curriculum. I don't want my kids on those damn screens. Please, we don't want digital curriculum. Do not use those funds to increase digital curriculum. What would I prefer our students to be doing? I prefer that they are involved in sports, in clubs. This district has made it impossible to start new clubs. They doubled the facility fees. There was a workshop earlier today. I'm urging them to further decrease those fees. If you have a district left since you've been having ever-declining enrollment, and I don't know what you're gonna have left in a year or so, but I do believe your golden ticket to keeping kids in the district is your facilities and sports teams, and singing clubs, and chess clubs, and various other clubs. So light up your fields, including El Dorado. Let all kids in this district know they matter. Lower the pool fees to thirty-five dollars an hour for all four of your twenty-five-meter pools. No other school charges by the lane. Cancel your July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one agreement with Cooperative Strategies. Your prior study was full of errors. Prioritize what's best for the students. Let them sing and let them play. Thank you.
I'm the president, I have six children, most of you know. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? And I just, you know, I know your jobs aren't easy. I, everybody here knows that. But I want to start with, listening to those Valencia kids singing, they were beautiful. I mean, just amazing, talented artists. And their song was, I had to write it, "America Lifted Her Voice." That is exactly what we are all doing here today, both sides, right? We're all here lifting our voice up to you. But what are you hearing most? Look around this room. Look at the people you guys represent. Look what you're hearing time and time again. You're hearing the same message with a few exceptions. You're hearing the message. We want choice. We want you to fight for us. We have statistics. We have all kinds of knowledge and educated people coming up begging you, asking you, "Fight for us. Fight for our children." We are here fighting for our children. That's what you guys were elected to do. Fight for us. Listen to us. We're lifting our voices up for you to hear. Please, we understand you cannot control what the state mandates, but you can control your voice. You can control fighting. You can lift up your voice for us.
I'm sorry, again, with a number of parts. Did we have Hannah Lane come over? Sorry, we're still in the forties here. I haven't seen the problem. I'm just saying, I'm gonna make sure I don't inadvertently go past someone. The next individuals to come forward would be Shanny Murray, Evelyn Jones, Tina Horns, and Becky Tullman.
Hi, my name is Shanny Murray, and I'm a high school freshman in the district. I also have a recent high school graduate. Both kids started in PYLUSD and preschool, and I love this district. But I am very concerned about having people who are not educators or experts in a related field banning the teaching of certain history or theories in the classroom. Please let the experienced educators set the curriculum.
Hello, my name is Tina Horns, and I have two kids in this school district. I spent quite a bit of time going through the agenda this evening. And the one thing that popped out at me is the fact that there seems to be an awful lot of apps being pushed. I feel like every single meeting, people vote on a new app, and a new this, and a new program to implement in the classroom on the screen. And it got me thinking, how is it that we have all this money for these apps, but we have to fundraise for things like art, for music, for sports, that parents have to give up so much of their money to provide things that should be part of regular curriculum? And then I thought, hmm, let me think about this. How is it that we magically find money for, to, to implement a brand-new program, CRT? Where did that money come from? Why isn't it being used for things that should be included, like art and history? And so, whatever you wanna call it, CRT or ethnic studies, it's the same garbage, just branded differently. How do I know this? I grew up in Soviet Russia. I know. I think instead of teaching kids CRT, we should teach them critical thinking. Instead of telling them what to think, we teach them how to think. That way, they do a lot of thinking for themselves, and not because somebody told them and is doing the thinking for them. Thank you.
Our legislators and representatives are not fighting for our constitutional rights. And we need, we need them to know that. We need to make sure that next time their term comes, we don't vote for those representatives here in California who are not representing, especially in our district. The, my son got a medical exemption. The medical was given by a doctor. It was not enough for administration. They wanted to know why. They wanted to know the reason. I told him that they were violating our HIPAA. And they said, "Well, if you want, you know, this medical exemption, you have to provide more detailed information." I looked at my son and said, "Do you want to do this?" He wanted to go back to school. It is his senior year. So as far as I can, I know they broke our constitutional rights. But this is what our governor and, and the district wanted. So I ask all of you guys here today, are you gonna go back and talk to the administrators and say, "Why did they have to break our medical privacy? Is that something that is going to be done with every student?" My son now has, he doesn't have to wear a mask, but he has to be in a plexiglass. So are there any lawyers that are ready for that?
Hi, my name is Becky, and I have children in the district. I want to thank the school board members and teachers who are advocating for our kids. It's not enough for parents to come up here and speak. It's up to the school board to act on our behalf. You're the ones that can make these changes. COVID-19, it's here to stay. It's not going away. We have the flu. It's not going away. We have a Delta variant, a Gamma variant, and who knows what other Latin variant we can come up with? So how long is this mandate gonna be? Wear a mask. Wear a double mask. When does it end? The only thing we have to fear is fear itself. Franklin D. Roosevelt, nineteen thirty-three, is still relevant today. COVID-19 is less of a threat to children than accidents or than to the flu. I'm not gonna go into the facts and everything, because everyone else here has presented themselves very well. Let's talk about mental health.
Let's talk about it.
Okay, so, mental health problems. ER visits have gone up. There's been studies. For children ages five to eleven, ER visits due to anxiety have increased by twenty-five percent. For children twelve to seventeen years of age, thirty-one percent. For those eighteen to twenty-four, by twenty-five percent. And not due to anxiety, but for reports of suicidal ideation. How many more kids will have to die of suicide for us to take action now? Masks are not the problem. Government, money, politics are.
Okay, the next group of speakers, Miguel Lopez, followed by Carol Vander, Vanderbur? I may have that wrong. Sonia Dallowal, and one more, Julie Sushar.
So I just wanna read something to everybody really quickly. This is from the Orange County Human Relations Commission. Every year, they publish statistics about hate crimes in Orange County. Orange County experienced one hundred and twelve reported hate crimes in 2020, a thirty-five percent increase in 2019. In the last five years, hate crimes have steadily been on the rise at the largest number during between 2016 and 2020. In 2020 alone, there was an alarming rise in hate incidents. There was a sixty-nine percent increase in the total number of hate incidents reported in 2020. So some of the numbers. There was a one hundred and fourteen percent increase in antisemitic hate incidents, an eighteen-hundred percent increase motivated by anti-Asian hate, and a twenty-three percent increase motivated by anti-black hate. For anybody who wasn't here a couple of school board meetings ago, we had a couple of children who presented basically a microcosm of what's happening in Orange County within our schools here. Those children came up and told all of us what they experienced every day in their classrooms as far as hate and bigotry and racism. And they were so discouraged from coming back by some of the parents here in this room that they decided that they would never come back because of how uncomfortable they were made to feel after sharing their experiences. We need ethnic studies. It is not CRT. It's not any of that crap. Your kids are skipping from K through twelve and going to a specialized legal school and all of a sudden graduating with a Juris Doctor. ES is something totally different. Hey, next time, say that for the ones that run over that wanna hear your crap too.
I really don't wanna have to have these stuff away, but I will if you do that again. We're almost done, let's try. Let's try with respect. Thank you very much. Okay, next.
Hi, I'm a grandparent, and I also had children go through the same school district. Never attended a meeting. It's hard to believe that we could be in this kind of, that you are in such a position where we're deciding things that never seemed to be on such a local level that impacted so many children. Anyways, every person here has the right to public comment. I would invite each and every one of you to get up and notice the people outside. The people, maybe they're gone, but they too have a voice. And, and their presence here was at once. And if you could acknowledge that. First off, the very first teachers in our children's lives and in our grandchildren's lives are the parents. They are your greatest asset to this board and to the school district. They always will be. Don't, don't, don't forget that and respect it. And lastly, I, I didn't realize, what has happened is you have unleashed so many mama bears in this room around the country. What do you expect when you, when that happens? You back them in a corner, and all they will do is protect their children.
Hi, my name's Sonia. I have two students in the district. I'm gonna share my opinions, which aren't gonna be popular with the majority of this audience, but I think it's important for me to share them anyways, because I do represent a large number of people in the district who share opinions with me that just happen to not be here. Thank you to the board members for protecting our children by following the mask mandate. As a physician, I implore you to please follow the vaccine mandate and to follow school and to approve of the vaccine for children. Please follow the science and not the noise. Just because certain voices and opinions are floundered, it doesn't mean that they are based on fact or that they represent the majority of people in our district. Please follow the mandate for teaching ethnic studies. Every student deserves to learn about the cultures that exist in our country and to learn about the U.S. history, the way it actually happened, and how it affects the day-to-day lives of minorities in this country. Teaching about racism and the impact it has on minorities does not cause people to be racist. The idea is to stop racism. And just, there was a speaker earlier tonight, also in a green shirt, a minority woman who was heckled by Caucasian members of the was heckled by Caucasian members of the audience, and I think that illustrates to how important ethnic studies is.
Hi, my kids graduated, but I'm speaking for a lot of parents who are afraid to come here because of the circus-like, intimidating manner. A lot of people.